Hi, I am Tara Anna King, the President and CEO of the Puyallup Sumner Chamber of Commerce. And I am excited to bring now our third recording of our C-Suite podcast that's specializing in our City of Puyallup City Council Candidate Series. We have met with Shelley Willis, we have met with Renee Gilliam, and today we are going to be meeting with Lauren Adler, who is currently running for the Position One District Position, that is where Robin Ferris has been seated. I am excited that Luke Corum is once again joining me. Luke?
I'm Luke Corum, I'm with Puyallup Nissan, I'm also on the Board here at the Puyallup Sumner Chamber of Commerce, and I help out this year with the interviews with the candidates.
Hey, we all know that this advocacy piece is important. As a business commerce, as the champion of business, there are a lot of business policies that get decided at the city level, at the local level. And so some of those policies are business friendly and some are definitely barriers too. So I'm excited to talk to Lauren a little bit, to learn more about what her background is, and in just what ways she feels she can bring some of her assets to the city. And hopefully this provides you with an avenue to learn a little bit more about her. So Lauren, welcome.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Well, we're excited. You're a face that's familiar to us, you know, predominantly as the sidekick to Denny Heck, Congressman Denny Heck, as his, what was it, your, his district director?
Yeah, I heard, held a couple positions, but ultimately ended as his district director in 2020.
Fantastic. So we've moved our way through federal, we've moved our way through state level positions. So now here at local, tell us a little bit about your why for running for City of Council.
Yes, well, thank you again. I appreciate the Chamber being so involved and wanting to learn more about those of us who have stepped up to take this on. My story is really Puyallup. I'm Puyallup born and bred, third generation, attended Puyallup schools, and then attended Pierce College, where I served as student body president twice.
So it begins.
Right. And so I have been involved in government and politics since I was 15. And that's when I actually served as a Senate page to Senator Jim Castama. And things kind of snowballed from there. As a young person, if you're involved, it's kind of like, oh, this, this person seems as if they're really engaged, and let's, let's bring them in and give them more, you know, things to do and volantol- tell them.
Yeah, we get that. We do that a lot at the Chamber.
So, um, yeah, everything that I have done in my career has been pretty much Puyallup, or 25th District, or 10th Congressional District, or State of Washington focused. This is my town, like I said. I live in the downtown, actually live above Anthem. Was very fortunate, five years ago, to purchase my first condo home. And I was very intentional about where I wanted to live, and that's because I grew up downtown. And frankly, I think that Puyallup needs more housing options like the building I live in, because I think it's really conducive to millennials like myself, that happen to be single with two dogs, and, you know, don't want to take on a yard, although sometimes I wish I had one. But I often say that my front and backyard is Pioneer Park. But that was really important to me, right, to show up in community regardless of what I was doing, or regardless of what my job was, is, you know, you can walk out and enjoy the farmer's market, I can walk out and go take my niece to the splash pad. I mean, that's what really gets me up and gets me going, is that our community has so much to offer, and I want to defend and protect that. But really, you know, thinking about why, my why are a couple things. One is I think that I bring a perspective to the council that can really enhance the focus of our city. And that is, you know, recognizing the tradition and the heritage that this community has and our city has. But also, as a millennial, perhaps seeing things in a different lens, and hopefully encouraging and fostering conversations that lend itself to what the future of Puyallup looks like. And also, just as a young, you know, homeowner, which I recognize as somewhat of a privilege, because it's so hard for people my age to buy, you know, that is an experience which I think I have a unique perspective on. And then also, having the opportu- having had the opportunity to work at all levels of government, and I really understand how government works, and I think that that can really help elevate the City of Puyallup, and, you know, identify quickly ways where we can get state-federal matches for our infrastructure projects, or our transportation projects, or grants that our businesses can go after. So, you know, I'm excited. I am someone who can hit the ground running day one, because I've had so much experience working in our community. On my way here, I was thinking, how many Puyallup Sumner businesses I've actually had the privilege to visit and meet with Presidents, CEOs, owners of those businesses while I worked for Congressman Heck? And that was really fun. And so despite there being a lapse of time, you know, I've been on that frontline also, you know, hearing from our business community. So I'll stop there, and then we can revisit, hopefully, a couple of my top issues.
So you mentioned meeting with businesses over the years, probably currently as well. What are some themes or narratives or concerns businesses here local have that you hear?
Okay, so first and foremost, which I'm sure is not a surprise to anyone here, is permitting. So I'm sure that, I'm gonna say this, and everyone's gonna think of the same three, because they've been pretty vocal, which I appreciate. Three new businesses in our community that struggled to get set up here and to open their doors because of issues with the city permitting and the code. And these three businesses have told me one-on-one and have said in public that if they had to do it again, they would not do it in Puyallup. And that is unacceptable, period, full stop. So I hear that a lot, is, you know, folks that want to do good things in our community, make a living, create jobs, simply cannot, again, get their doors open and provide that in our city because of issues that they're having at City Hall. Now, I don't pretend to have the answers right now, but what I will commit to is getting in there and asking hard questions and being a squeaky wheel. So I'm sorry to say that, you know, out loud and put, you know, the city a little bit on notice, but I don't know how we continue to allow this to happen, frankly, when we have new businesses publicly saying that. That is very disheartening. So permitting, and I would also say, on the development side, it's permitting too. So if we want to talk about housing and housing development, how are we ever gonna increase our housing stock if there's also permitting issues on that side? So that's number one. Number two, I think workforce, or that's what I've heard. You know, one of our businesses that just opened up, that I've been visiting quite a bit, you know, the, the two owners are working, you know, sunup to sundown, haven't yet hired employees. I think that they hopefully will, but, you know, it's always, how do we find that workforce? How do we attract and retain, especially when, you know, folks have so many options right now of where they can work, and have become a little bit picky? So those two, I would say, and then, thirdly, I think also seeing how they can engage better with elected officials in the city at some level. That's not to say that our elected officials and city leaders are not out doing the work, but I think that if there were increased opportunities for these business owners and business leaders to do that, I think that then, that could help solve these issues with permitting and other, you know, hurdles that business owners need to clear, or wanting to clear.
You've got a great pulse. You're doing your homework for sure.
I try.
One, I had another question about the affordable housing. So we hear that, and I've heard that theme come up here, because Puyallup obviously is getting expensive, and is it just building multifamily, like what you're talking about? How do you make it for that first-time mortgage person from a government lens? How do you make it affordable for that first-time homeowner buyer here?
That's a big question. And again, I'll say that, you know, I don't pretend to have all the answers. But what I do know, what I believe, is that housing is an ecosystem. So I think that you can't talk about affordable housing and only talk about single-family, or, you know, the, the building like I live in, which is multifamily housing. And so I think that we definitely need to have hard conversations, or continue to have hard conversations in Puyallup about what we want to see. That also yields opportunity for first-time homebuyers to perhaps really imagine what they want their future to look like. Because it's not always, you know, an example, myself, single-family home, you know, did I, you know, was that really the right fit for me? No. But is, you know, the condo life a better fit for me? Sure. But what's good for me isn't good for the next person, but I appreciated that opportunity to have that choice. And so I think that if we can increase the different types of housing that we have, that would be helpful. You know, the city, or government, rather, doesn't own, they own a lot of responsibility about housing in general, and how, the best way to, to reach, you know, the different housing opportunities in our communities. But, you know, then you have, you know, you could talk about workforce and, you know, livable wages and that type of thing. Or, you know, interest rates and going down, you know, that path. I don't think that government owns or bears the entire responsibility, but what I do, again, believe is having conversations, and again, having those hard conversations about what does this mean? You know, I, also just because of the way that our society is aging, and particularly how we're growing, you know, I personally would like to see going more vertical, similar, yeah, density. But, you know, I know that that's not, what I think is great, isn't great for everyone. And then-
But it adds that diversity, and like you said, the options, so that we're getting, hitting the full spectrum on price. I think the other thing I would just add is feedback to you now, that we're hearing from the business community quite often, is the speed of government and the speed of business is a cost of money. And so if you're a builder, developer, whether residential or commercial, and it's just taking you longer, all of those incurred costs and having a project stretch out so long gets passed on to the, to the next person. So truly, just that speed is, is an improvement if we can improve speed.
Right. Absolutely. And I think that it just increases costs on all sides of the process, which no one wants to see. To that point, on the other side, the economic development side is one of those three businesses that I had the opportunity to chat with, and this was very, like, serendipitous. I was on the street wondering about this one business, and I was talking to a friend about it, and these people walked by me, and they say, "Oh, that's us," and then that was a really organic conversation. And they shared with me their story about what's taking so long, but they said that they, you know, had their, what they thought was a final meeting with the city. And they went in and left with a $15,000 check, or check, bill, rather. And, again, you know, again, it's just adding more costs, slowing the process down. These folks hope to be open by the end of the year, and I really hope so too. And I hope that I can be a catalyst for change. And again, if not change immediately, which doesn't always happen that quickly, is to have those conversations and really dig in and find out what is going on. Because this is not an anomaly that's happening in our city on both sides, development and on the economic development side.
Thinking back with your time working with Congressman Heck, and your time in Washington DC, and back here, you see a lot of this trajectory where you're a staff and you come in. When was the point where you said, "I think I could run for a public office now"? What made you, inspired you, or maybe someone had a conversation with you?
Well, I think that Denny is a great teacher, period. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to have worked for him for just under 10 years. You know, I will be honest and say that running for City Council was not on my bingo card for 2023. But, you know, I'm in a place in my life where I have the time to dedicate to this very big job, and know, you know, where to go to get things done. And I know I have an understanding of how, you know, city government works. So I think that working for Denny really provided me with a good understanding of how to solve problems and get things done. I had a conversation with him about my desire to do this, and really what it came back to is just my love for the city, right? Coupled with my experience in government, which is just about 20 years, which is hard for me to say. And, you know, I, if you look over my career, it's always been something that brought me back to the community which I was born and raised in, whether it was at Pierce College, you know, and serving as student body president, whether it was serving on the Board of Directors for the Puyallup Food Bank, whether it was as a ninth grader, standing on the corner, holding a yellow sign on behalf of the school district in 2004, asking people to vote for the bond that year. It's just always been a drive in me to give back into the community and elevate, or leverage, rather, my experience. So my maternal grandfather passed away at the age of 91 earlier this year, and he was like, "Mr. Puyallup." Now, he moved away to, he, he and my grandmother moved away to Sun City West, like, 20 years ago, and I forgive him for that, I forgive them. But, I mean, he was the quarterback of the 1949 Puyallup High School football team that brought home a state championship. He worked for some of our former elected officials back in the 70s, 80s. He worked at the Capitol, and he really cared about this community. And I'm actually, you know, a regret in my life is that I didn't tell him before he passed that I was thinking about doing this, because I know that he would have just thought that that was incredible. But I wasn't able to do that in time, and his passing was unexpected. But he really instilled in me the importance of community and to give back, and to do the right thing. And if you see an opportunity to really leverage your experience and to make things better, then you ought to, you know, put yourself up and step up and do that. And he showed me, he was the first person to demonstrate to me public service. And so I think about that almost every day, and then I think about, you know, Denny's sacrifice in a 50-year career of public service. And he started when he was young too. He was 24 when he was first elected.
What a great mentor for you, in both of those, right? Very fortunate.
So.
What does your Government Affairs position now as Director, you said Elevance Health? What does that entail for you? What kinds of issues are you, you know, working on? And in what ways does that help you, again, at the local level, look at our Good Samaritan, our Sound Family Medicine, all of our healthcare systems here, and what kind of issues or needs they have that could be helped at the local level?
Sure. So Elevance Health is one of the largest health insurance companies in our country. But Elevance does not offer commercial plans in our state, but we do offer a Medicaid product under the name AmeriGroup. And so what I do for the company here in the state is all things government relations, so, and it's state and local. So relationships with our state legislators, relationships with county-city officials, and those municipal elected officials, I maintain those. But also, when it's legislative session, any healthcare bill that gets introduced, which is a lot, I review with a team and determine, you know, how that would impact our business, and then strategize on how we want to either support, amend, or kill, you know, a piece of legislation that would impact us. And so, day-to-day, it's a lot of strategy work, but frankly, it's a lot of problem solving. So I also spend a lot of time working with the Healthcare Authority, which is one of our state agencies, and they hold the contract for Medicaid in our state. And so they're our regulator, and a lot of times, you know, there's a lot to be, figure out in terms of the regulation that comes down, and how our contract is also interpreted. And that is problem solving. So every day, almost every day, it's how do we work towards the same goal? How do we bring people along? And how do we, again, have those hard conversations of we see the world very differently as it relates to this policy, or rule? And so I spend a lot of time doing that, but I also dabble in marketing and PR, and working to elevate, no pun, our brand in the area. So it's increasing Chamber membership across the Sound and across the state, and then, you know, looking for ways for us as a business to engage with the business community. So spend a lot of time in Olympia when session is happening.
I have a question from my lens, from my industry for you. So there's been a lot of regulations passed out from the state and now to the county. I'm in the car industry, new car dealer. Where do you think the city plays a role in this, when you hear these bans from, on gasoline vehicles by 2035, I think it is? And then, you know, you hear counties above us that are doing bans on some of these things. Where do you stand on that, from a city perspective, on some of these things that have to do with electric? Electrifying, I should say?
Well, inevitably, I think we're moving towards the electrification of our world. But what I will say is that I very much like and believe in local control. Now, how that manifests, or how that is, how that works out, I think, is up for discussion. What I would say is, it is important for the city and City Council members to meet with folks like yourself and your industry to understand how these federal and state regulations impact you on the day-to-day, and how it is hindering your business in the city. What I believe City Council members in the city should do is then take your story and share it with our state legislators, our state executives, and other federal leaders about, hey, you know, these policies are working towards the way that our, you know, country, excuse me, seems to be going, but we need to have a broader conversation on how that trickles down and impacts, you know, mainstream America, if you will. I really want to be fostering that relationship. That's not to say that y'all, I mean, I know y'all do a very good job of advocating for your positions, and you've been involved for a really long time. And I know that you have those direct relationships, but it only makes sharing your story stronger, right? If I, as a city official, am going to legislators and, and repeating that, you know, I think that then it really causes good conversation to happen, and to learn more about exactly how that is impacting your business and what you're seeing, also from consumers. Because I think that that's also really important in the bigger picture of our city and constituency.
Off that subject, but just back to constituents and talking, we talked about you speaking of business, now just with residents, Puyallup City residents in the First District for Position One. What, what are they saying to you? What are they saying you go to City, obviously you're gonna be in our City Council? What are they saying they want you to do?
A lot of questions about the Public Safety Building, of course, because that will be on the ballot this fall.
And what's your thoughts on that, real quick?
So I am in support of the bond, and I want to first say that I am fully aware and live in the same economic environment that everyone in our city is living in. And I recognize that it is a very big decision to make, to increase taxes. However, what I really, really, really struggle with, and am very concerned about, is the city's ability to recruit and retain our current officers and professionals.
We don't level up.
Right. I think that, you know, if, if you haven't been able to walk through the current, I know, I know. You should, because I think that there is no, the opportunity to provide a worker's dignity in that space is lacking. We should not have professionals nor officers working in closets, or having to, you know, fix a pipe when they walk into the bathroom, or walk into a room and it's flooding, or the roof is leaking. We need to move beyond that. And again, I recognize that this is a very tough economic environment that we are living in. And everyone has to make the choice that's right for themselves and their, their family. But if we do not offer a world-class Public Safety Building, I really do wonder what happens as we continue to grow in this community. And also, you know, I am very proud of the fact that Puyallup, residents of Puyallup really care about our police officers and the professionals that work for the department. And I think that having a new Public Safety Building that's 21st century reflects that. So that's a big piece of the conversation, and also trying to the best of my ability to answer questions, because I'm not on the City Council yet, and so reminding folks that I did not make, I did not officially make the decision to, you know, put the bond on the ballot. But if I were on the Council, I would have voted for it, absolutely. And then also, just living and surviving also in this environment of inflation, that's a conversation that frankly, I just like hearing at the doors and from folks just about how they are making it, and what is really prohibiting them from living their life, or the differences that they've seen, you know, from two years ago to today. A lot of conversation about these incredible new businesses that have opened recently, or how they tried to walk into one, but it was so crazy-packed that they haven't been able to go yet. And the, folks are really excited. I mean, folks want to be here in our city, be downtown, support our businesses, and walk home, or, you know, the ease of that. So that's really great feedback. And then frankly, there's a lot about transportation, and, you know, sitting on Meridian, or, you know, right, what about 167? I heard that that's gonna be completed, but I just sat, you know, on, on the freeway for 90 minutes. And so a lot of times, because of my experience, I'm also able to help share information. And that's been cool, I have to say. But also, you know, I would have to say that it's more positive than negative, which in my past lives is different. But Puyallup's great. I mean, you know, it's, it's talking about concerts in the park, but then that also leads to the, you know, restrooms.
What do you do for fun, speaking of concerts in the park?
Well, I'm-
And you have two dogs, so I bet you they're part of the fun sometimes.
Uh, yes. But speaking of concerts, I do attend a lot of concerts. I am going to Taylor Swift this weekend.
You are not. Do you have your bracelet?
I don't have a bracelet, but I have two different outfits to choose from, so let's hope that one works out.
There is such a culture there.
I, it is.
Are you going Saturday or Sunday?
Sunday.
Sunday.
So we'll see how transportation goes, to be honest. I have two nieces and a nephew. I like to hang out with them. I'm very fortunate to have a pretty strong and expansive, you know, social network, and a lot of really great friends that I've had since elementary school, junior high. And they all have kids, and so, you know, I get to be, hopefully, the cool aunt. And that's really it. I, I travel, but never anywhere like super cool. I spend some time in Palm Springs, which is one of my favorite places. I know how to golf. I don't do it very often, so I probably should say I am, you know, someone who swings clubs, I guess you could say. But yeah, I, you know, just like being with people and hanging out and, and keeping up. I, the last thing I'll say is, I am a pop culture and reality TV junkie, so when I need to- So when I need to slow down and just put my brain on pause, you can find me.
Check out there. I st- I still just think it's such an asset that you have this federal and state um experience to draw from, um probably relationships to leverage a bit too. And I think that's just gonna be such a valuable asset on the city council, so. And and, you know, again, we don't do endorsements and you don't have an opponent, but but boy, are you speaking the business um communities language when you talk about some of the issues that you're gonna go in. It doesn't sound like mildly, but boldly. And I think that, I think a lot of people are at that bold point right now where it's, it's, yeah, none of us want to hear what we hear on the streets in the community we love so much and has such potential.
Yeah, I uh, I hope to do so, and I, you know, hope to do so alongside you and your members. Um, and really look forward to getting back involved. Um, when I worked for Denny, I was very involved with the chamber and um I hope to reinstate that and come back even stronger.
Let's do it.
Where do people find you, like around town, on social media, places like that?
Um, social media, you can find me on Instagram or Facebook. Just type in uh Friends of Lauren Adler. Um, I probably not the smartest, right, that I always say that I live above Anthem. So people know exactly where I live. Um, but truly, I oftentimes joke with people, like just start throwing rocks at the windows and you might see me pop out. Um, but I am at Anthem a lot. I, you know, because I have two dogs, I'm in the park a lot. I'm walking around the downtown a lot. Um, so yeah, I truly encourage people to reach out. I will meet with anyone, anywhere, at any time to talk about anything, and I truly, truly mean that. And uh if you asked around, I I hope that people would agree.
Great. Well, again, lucky and thank you so much for um opting to serve at this young age. And again, I think that alone does address kind of a targeted, you know, I guess, population here in Puyallup that we want to attract more people like you. Um, and just really keep that diversity and um all the different things that that brings to it. So thank you.
Thank you.
For for running and, I guess, soon serving.
We hope so.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, folks. That that wraps up number three. We look forward to seeing you for the next one. Thanks for doing it.